Regular meeting number 31 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome up Pastor Scotty Aaron from Friendship Baptist Church. Thank you Pastor Aaron.
Thank you. May we pray. Gracious God our Father, in the name of Jesus, we come this day, we thank you for this blessed day that you've given us. We ask blessings now upon this gathering. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? It's been moved in second. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the City Clerk's Office are listed on the agenda to be published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
How about resolutions from members of council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
Thank you President Klein. First, I would like to introduce Dylan Hartman, who is shadowing me today. And if you could just introduce yourself quickly at the microphone.
I am a rising senior at Granville High School, and I'm interested in politics and film.
Thank you Dylan. I hope you haven't been too bored today. Next, I have a resolution. As I begin talking about this resolution, I'd like to invite Carla Rothan, Executive Director of Stonewall Columbus, and Kim Welter, Director of Finance and Policy for Equality Ohio, to the podium, please. As a city, Columbus has a long history of welcoming and embracing all members in our community, including the LGBTQ community. This is thanks in part to the great work of organizations like Stonewall Columbus and Equality Ohio. This is also thanks to residents of our city being open and welcoming, which is something we can all continue to embrace and be proud of. However, as we prepare for the illumination of City Hall tonight, for the Pride Parade this weekend, and for all of the other events which mark this as Pride Week in Columbus, it is important to remember that there is still so much work to be done, and that members of the LGBTQ community still face discrimination in Ohio and throughout the country. That is why I have sponsored this resolution to support passage of the Federal Equality Act. While Columbus can and has taken action locally to protect the LGBTQ community from discrimination in housing and employment, only a federal law can provide these same protections nationwide. The Equality Act would do that by prohibiting discrimination on the basis of sex, sexual orientation, and gender identity. The Act has been reintroduced as HR 2282 and 1006 in the 115th Congress. Resolution 0160X-2017 helps demonstrate Columbus' continuing commitment to equality for women and the LGBTQ community, both in our city and throughout the country. So with that, I would like to move to adopt Resolution 0160X-2017 before handing over the microphone.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Carla and Kim, thank you for being here with us this evening. The podium is yours.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Brown, my esteemed counsel from the city of Columbus. It is Pride Week, but we would be remiss if we did not remember what day it is today, June 12th, the anniversary of the Orlando massacre. And I believe it was you and I, Councilmember Brown, in what I think was not one of my best moments, in shock, I believe, at the center on this day. And you were very kind to me, and I really appreciate it. But it was a very difficult time, and we honor those lives lost. But we are vigilant, and we are prepared for what is going to be a very safe and happy pride, as we light City Hall this evening in honor of Gloria McCully and Linda Schuler. And so that is going to be a very exciting lighting of the City Hall with our Illuminator Awards. So I want to thank our president, all of our city council members for, you know, allowing us to be a part of this city in a way that not a lot of cities get to boast. As you know, I just saw a sign from, if you can believe it, St. Petersburg, Florida, where they were putting up big signs of hate all over the city right now. And so it was very disturbing, but we can say, we're not going to let that happen here. So we're really, really appreciative of everything you've done to stand by us through this very, very difficult year. But as we move into Pride Week, we want to thank you for adopting this resolution to support the Equality Act and all of those folks that really look to us as the leadership for fairness. And so thank you so much.
Thank you Carla.
So, thank you Council, President Klein, Councilmember Brown, and other city council members. Columbus is a city that has a self-imposed mandate. It values its LGBTQ population, and it demonstrates that through civil equality. The city and its representatives continually strive to be a model of inclusion. In fact, the city has gone further than what the state itself has done to protect its LGBTQ citizens. There are no state laws like those in Columbus that protect LGBTQ people. While a resident of Columbus, and proudly so, I live very close to Grandview Heights in Upper Arlington. I'm protected in Columbus, but not when I have breakfast at my favorite diners or grocery shop in those other two cities. And like the state of Ohio, the federal government itself does not protect LGBTQ people in the way Columbus does. And the resolution today supports the effort at the federal level to do that. Seventeen other cities in Ohio have the kind of protections that our city has, but that only covers about a fifth of Ohioans. Nobody should have to decide what city or state in which to live, based on whether or not they have basic civil rights. Tonight's resolution in support of the Equality Act says that the entire country should be more like Columbus, committed to in ensuring that LGBTQ people are Americans and ought to be treated like every other American. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments from my colleagues? Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Before I pass the microphone on, I actually wanted to very quickly take a moment to give some much-needed recognition to a special person who is here tonight, Colin Lee, who has been an intern in my office since March of this year. Colin joined us after graduating from the Ohio State University, where he studied political science. And in his time with us, he's added a ton of bandwidth to my office and has readily tackled everything we've thrown at him, cheerfully, too. Sadly, this is his last week with us before he proceeds to his next professional experience as an AmeriCorps member, working for I Know I Can. So I'm really proud to have had you as part of the team, Colin, and I just wanted to formally recognize you on the floor of council tonight. And good luck with AmeriCorps. It will be one of the best and most formative years of your life. Thanks Colin.
Thank you President Protem. I only have, President, I only have one announcement this evening. There are approximately 68,000 veterans in Franklin County. In collaboration with my office, the Columbus Central Ohio Building Trades will be conducting a Veterans Job Fair on June 29th from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. The event will be held at the Columbus Central Ohio Building and Construction Trades Council, located at 947 Goodell Boulevard, Columbus, Ohio 43212. There will be over 15 different building trades represented. There will be free food available, and there will be no charge to attend. I simply ask that everyone please share with any veteran that you know about this potential opportunity. Thank you sir.
Thank you President Klein. This evening, I have the honor of presenting Resolution 0166X-2017, and I'd like to invite Andrew Levitt and the Representatives from the Create Columbus Commission to come forward, please. 0166X-2017 is to recognize the leadership and outreach of Columbus Young Professional, Andrew Levitt, as a recipient of the Create Columbus Commission Visionary Award. Andrew Levitt began performing in drag after graduating from Denison University. Today, under the stage name Nina West, Levitt performs shows in Columbus, entertained and served as an LGBT activist. Andrew is a co-founder of Project Zero Columbus, which is a nonprofit that raises money to provide standard care for people with HIV and AIDS. Andrew recently was awarded the Human Rights Campaign Equality Award, and, you know, the entire community really looks up to Andrew for the work. I am most proud because you use your gift to help people, to give people a voice, to uplift people, and to give people a smile. And I think that is a lesson that we can all use and follow. And so I am extremely excited to present this resolution and open it up for, actually, I'll let you guys speak first, and then we'll pass the resolution.
Good evening, and thank you, thank you Council President Klein, Councilmembers, and Councilmember Harden for the introduction. My name is Anna Sanyal, and I'm honored to represent the Create Columbus Commission in recognizing Andrew Levitt. The Create Columbus Visionary Award is awarded each quarter to an exemplary individual who's making a positive impact in the central Ohio community. As Councilmember Harden mentioned, Andrew is kind of a local celebrity, as you may know. And he's also an immense champion of LGBTQ and other social causes. I would like to briefly mention Andrew's deep love for this community. I think that doesn't get a lot of traction. Unlike, you know, I discovered this when I was talking to him about the award, and while we were chatting, he mentioned that unlike other cities like New York and Chicago, Columbus is this great entrepreneurial spirit, where if you have an amazing idea, it's small enough that you can meet the movers and shakers and really make your idea come into being. And that's really what inspires Andrew. And for this reason, he's made central Ohio his home since 2001. And from this home base, he's raised over $1.5 million for local and national causes. So we are really excited to give this award to Andrew, and it's a happy coincidence that this is Pride Week as well. Without further ado, Andrew, if you would like to come up and accept the award and maybe say a few words.
Sure. Thank you very much. Thank you very much to the Create Columbus Commission, and of course, it's an honor to stand in front of city council. I really do appreciate this honor. It's truly humbling. I love this city so very much, and I love what I do. I have been given a tremendous platform to speak for people who don't have the ability, and I'm really proud of the voice that I use every day to change people's lives. And I've only been empowered by the city that I live in, and by the people who've lifted me up and put me on a platform to do so. It's an honor to receive this during Pride Month. It's also a tremendous honor today to receive this on a day of remembrance for friends that we all lost at Pulse nightclub in Orlando, Florida. As someone who had the ability to go down just a couple days after the massacre and perform for Orlando, I was deeply reminded of how incredibly powerful that community felt like home to me, because it felt so tightly knit, like my home of Columbus, Ohio. I know, I realize that I'm totally lucky to be here today to receive this. And today is a great reminder for me to be vocal and to be vigilant, and I'm very, very grateful for this opportunity. So thank you again for this honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you Andrew. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? There's no comments. If not, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Congratulations again. And my, one other announcement, Ms. Carla acknowledged this, but tonight at 8:00 p.m., Mayor Gunther, council colleagues, and I will host the annual Pride Illumination Event. As the sun goes down, City Hall will be lit up in the colors of the rainbow to celebrate Pride Week and our city's commitment to inclusivity. We'll also be awarding the Second Annual Steven Schallerberger Award to Gloria McCully and Linda Schuler for their work to advance LGBTQ rights in Columbus. And we're just really excited to kick off a happy and safe and fun Pride Week here in Columbus. So encourage folks to come back down, 8:00 p.m. as the sun starts to go down. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you President, excuse me, President Klein. First of all, I want to introduce Jordan Patterson, who is a summer intern with our office, and let him share a little about himself, and he's a returning intern to our office. Jordan.
Good evening, Columbus City Council. As Councilmember Tyson said, my name is Jordan Harrison. I previously interned here for a while, and I love it, always love coming back and seeing what has changed, and being able to help Councilmember Tyson carry out more of her projects. I'm an incoming sophomore at the University of Cincinnati. I am the former president of the Tech Core Sensory Junior Chapter that is local here in Columbus, Ohio, that helped create STEM programming for K-12 students. And I, last but not least, I am a graduate of Eastmore Academy, my mentor's alma mater. So I am elated to be back, and thank you so much.
Thank you Jordan, again. Excuse me, I have this cough. I'm excited that you have returned. I have just really two announcements. On next Wednesday, the 21st, I will have at 5:00 my bi-weekly Health and Human Services and Workforce Development hearing on the upcoming legislation. Excuse me. And also, this Tuesday, tomorrow, there'll be at the Linden Point of Pride, and I think Councilmember Jaisa Page will be there, too. It will have the produce, the produce market, and looking forward to, the produce markets are, have been funded by the Human Services Committee, and I just want to make sure that it's an opportunity for people to be able to come out and have access to, to local produce within our community, and as well as get a lot of information about the community. And it will be in the Linden community from 4:00 to 6:00 tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you President Protem Tyson. Are there any comments by our elected officials, Auditor Dorian, the Treasurer's Office, City Attorney Pfeiffer? I don't see any representatives from the judiciary here. Seeing none, are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance, resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? May we now have a motion to waive, waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Clerk, will you now read into the record the ordinance numbers of each on 30-day legislation for tonight's agenda?
Finance Committee, ordinance 1434-2017. Technology Committee, ordinance 1097-2017. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance 1392-2017. Rules and Reference Committee, ordinances 1497 and 1589-2017. Zoning Committee, ordinances 1478, 1481, 1483, 1485, 1486, 1489, and 1508-2017.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Clerk Blevins, will you now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 171X, 178X, 173X, 174, 175, and 176X-2017. Finance Committee, ordinance is 1310, 1322, 1334, 1336, 1356, 1381, 1390, 1407, 1455-2017. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 1432-2017. Neighborhoods Committee, ordinance 1331-2017. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 1261, 1263, and 1264-2017. Housing Committee, ordinance is 1338, 1469, 1470, 1471, 1472, 1473, 1474, 1475, and 1476-2017. Technology Committee, ordinance 1081, 1232, 1346, 1379, and 1437-2017. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 1256, 1314, 1325, 1353, 1357, 1375, and 1386-2017. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, ordinance is 1343, 1413-2017. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0099, 100, 102, 103, and 104-2017.
We do have one consent action speaker. It's Nathaniel Wilkins, who's speaking in favor of 1476-2017. It's in the Housing Committee. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council.
1612 Arlington Avenue. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman, solely vacant property in North Linden area. I just want to know how long 245 Miami Avenue has been sitting in the land bank, and what would this property be used for? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. If development could follow up with Mr. Wilkins on those questions, we would appreciate it. Any other questions or comments on the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion for approval of consent, the consent action portion? For a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Consent action carries. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. It's chaired by President Protem Tyson. President Protem, the floor is yours.
Thank you President Klein. I have ordinance number 1418-2017. It's to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into contract for the option to purchase CNG fueling services with U.S. Venture, Inc., to authorize expenditure of $1 to establish a contract from the General Fund and to waive formal competitive bidding requirements. The estimated expenditure for this fuel will be $150,000, and I'm going to ask Director Lombardi to please, one, share a little bit more of information about the, this ordinance, as well as why we are waiving competitive bidding provisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you President Klein, President Protem Tyson, and other members of council. This ordinance is to establish a universal term contract with U.S. Ventures, Inc. to purchase CNG. This is in anticipation to the construction and completion of the new CNG facility that will be located on the west side. The reason why we are waiving competitive bids, operationally, it makes more sense to have a station near where our facilities are, and that includes our refuse division, and there's a fire station 31, I believe, is on the west side. So it makes operational sense to have somewhere for those folks to get their fuel until that facility is completed. Once that facility is completed, we will no longer need the services of this particular contract. We may, we may put a little bit of funding on it, just in case if there's something that comes up at the facility, we have the ability to get the CNG for our trucks, but we don't anticipate to have to use that service once the CNG facility is, is built. This location of the station is like the Rome Hilliard Road, Traboo Road area, so it is near where our CNG west side facility will be built. So this will be a good thing for refuse in the fire division.
Thank you Director, and my colleagues can recall that last, last Monday's meeting is where we passed the legislation for the new CNG station on the west side. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. I now would like to move to Health and Human Services. Knock that deep voice on you, Councilmember Brown. She's looking at me like, that voice is so deep over there. She's looking at me like, oh, okay. All right, well, ordinance 1324-2017 is to authorize Columbus City Council to enter into a grant agreement with the Boy Scouts of America, the Simon Kitten Council, in effort in support of their refugee and immigration outreach and recruitment efforts, and to authorize appropriation and expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative Sub-Fund. And this again is for $25,000, and this is an initiative that is certainly is being sponsored by Councilmember Michael Stenziano. And so, Michael Stenziano, the floor is yours.
Thank you President Protem Tyson. Very excited and appreciate not only your support as Chair of Finance, but also all of our colleagues' support. This ordinance allows for a new initiative, particularly targeting some of our communities on the west side of Columbus, and to bring a scouting program that will be a pilot for the city of Columbus to those communities. It's an area that's underserved with a variety of resources, and so this will really provide not only programming for the child, but the entire family, working on citizenship, education, community service opportunities, life skills, and also a sense of belonging in the structured environment that the scouting program provides. In the audience is Jennifer Koma from the Boy Scouts of America, and Zurka Abid of My Project USA, and want to thank you both for being here. As we always experience, we're out and about, we're meeting with folks, and we hear different pieces, and this is one that really came together. Jennifer in particular said, you know, we're looking to get involved in new communities, particularly new American communities in the city. And Zurka had me out and said, we've got an area that has a lot of needs. And so this funding and this pilot program will immediately have an impact, and really appreciate all of your support to help make that happen.
Thank you Councilmember Stenziano, and certainly, this is an innovative program, and certainly, in neighborhoods where we don't necessarily have a lot of activities, we don't have a recreational facility yet, or we don't have a lot of other places for young people to go, this is a great way to be able to make sure young people have the opportunity to be able to be with great leadership and great mentoring. So congratulations on this initiative, working with the Boy Scouts and with Project USA. And if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And the last ordinance that I have in Health and Human Services is ordinance number 1414-2017, and it is to authorize appropriation of $175,000 to Columbus Public Health within the Neighborhood Initiative Sub-Fund in support of a community resiliency program. And I'm going to ask Marion Stuckey to come to the podium to share information about this initiative. And it certainly is an initiative that is supported by all of the coun, of all of council, but certainly is spearheaded by President Klein. Good evening.
Good evening. This is, I'm Marion Stuckey, and this is Helen Stipian of Netcare. We are members of the core team. We'd first like to thank you, President Klein, and President Protem Tyson, and fellow council members. We are extremely grateful for this opportunity and to have the support of city council. It means so much to us as we move forward on this important initiative. So when trauma happens to one person, one family, or one neighborhood, it happens to all of us. And the Columbus Care Coalition is a collaborative community effort led by Columbus Public Health to help the community through different times, difficult times, I'm sorry. The Columbus Care Coalition stands for community, action, resilience, and empowerment, and we are working to encourage, help, and support healing in individuals and families. We have the responsibility to create opportunities for parts of our community that are experiencing trauma and are overburdened by trauma. Our community cannot be whole as, or strong as a whole if residents are struggling and in need of more support. Our coalition has five working groups, Community Outreach, Crisis Intervention, Networking, a Trauma Resource Guide, and Trauma Training. And in the coming months, we will establish pilot locations in Linden and Hilltop, creating neighborhood committees to guide the work in these areas. Our coalition is working to increase education about trauma-informed care and to create an infrastructure to quickly respond to traumatic events. And at the end of the day, we hope to increase resiliency for all of the families in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Ms. Stuckey, don't leave the podium yet. Can you just?
Ms. Stuckey, don't leave the podium yet. Can you just share with our viewing and
listening audience, I know you've been doing some work already in the communities, and can you can just kind of give an example of the work that you've been doing when there has been a traumatic event in the community?
Definitely. So Helen and I actually had the opportunity to meet with a grandmother who had a traumatic loss in her family. She had lost two of her grandsons and was just really reeling from the loss. And so, we were able to go to her home and support her and just hear from her about what she had experienced. So that's just one example of, one of the ways that we would help out. It would include door-to-door work, as well as community mental health and wellness clinics as well. So that was, that would be one way.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, President Protim. Thank you, President Protim, and thank you to the Department of Health and my colleagues for joining us in this effort that I think is much needed and really allows Columbus to be on the cutting edge of addressing violence in our community. When I think of tackling violence after having many community meetings, I think that it's certainly effective policing strategies, it's economic opportunity for individuals, but it's also looking at violence as a public health issue, and treating the underlying traumatic event that could affect someone's life in the hopes that we can prevent future crime to begin with. But it's simply not limited to violence when you look at the socioeconomic conditions that many people in our community and across the country are faced with every day, all of which could be some sort of trauma that that individual has to be raised and born with into a scenario that is beyond his or her control. And I think this is an opportunity, and I believe and hope that it's an opportunity as well, for us to come together as a community to treat that underlying problem, to give people the opportunity that they deserve to achieve the American dream. And I'm hopeful that with this proactive in going out and talking about trauma and the, the symptoms of trauma, the treatment of trauma, but also the reactive approach of, of showing up when an incident happens. And I know that health has, the example you just gave to the, with the grandmother, but as well as the triple homicide on the Hilltop, where citizens were, were yearning for the city to step in and help them deal with the problem in their community that they just witnessed, they had no control over. So I, I believe that this partnership with health is just the beginning, and I applaud you and look forward to the work that we're doing of rolling up your sleeves and, and really getting the boots on the ground to knock on doors, to have community meetings, and talk about the incidences of violence in our community. Thank you, President Protim.
Thank you, President Klein. This will, again, a pilot in the Linden and the Hilltop communities. So thank you, and we look forward to hearing all about your work. Thank you. And your Councilmember Harden.
Thank you so much, President Protim Tyson and President Klein, for your leadership on this issue. And certainly, thank you, Ms. Stuckey, Helen, for being here this evening and for the work that you do. I can tell you that being out in the community, the work that CARE has done is widely respected. And so I look forward to hearing good things about the work that you're doing, because it is, it saves lives, and that's what we're talking about this summer, as it gets warmer outside, and for many of reasons, if these violent, or situations where trauma would follow occur, to have the city standing behind an organization like CARE to provide these services is so important, and so I appreciate it. The one point that I would, would encourage is to make, is, and I, and I know this for some of you, for your workers, but as we go out into specific communities, that, that the folks that are working with the communities are, mirror the community that they're serving. And I think that's just a really important part, and I've seen that in CARE workers in the past, but we just wanted to, to applaud you for that and encourage that as we go forward with these dollars.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Harden. And even to add to that comment, I know that you are engaging the key community leaders that are already within those neighborhoods, which is really important, and working with churches and nonprofits and our pride centers. And I also know that there's work that's also going on through the APS program, through Recreation and Parks. And so just appreciate that, the work that the city has been involved in around this issue of trauma in neighborhoods. And so with that, if there are no, any comments from anyone else, move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein, and that's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, President Protim Tyson. The next committee is Economic Development. It's chaired by Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Chair Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Economic Development, we have ordinance 1415-2017 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 from the 2017 General Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance provides financial support for the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority, which the city of Columbus has provided since the authority was created in March 2006 by Columbus City Council and the Franklin County Board of Commissioners. The Finance Authority serves as a valuable resource for local development projects by working in conjunction with banks and other public partners to provide long-term financing to businesses, nonprofit organizations, and local governments. I'm particularly excited to continue supporting the work that the Finance Authority undertakes through the Columbus Region Energy Loan Fund. This program provides cost-effective financing for energy efficiency building improvements. Many building owners often have difficulty securing financing for energy efficiency improvements through traditional banks, making the Energy Loan Fund a key component in our efforts to make Columbus a more sustainable and environmentally friendly city for the long term. To date, the Finance Authority has issued more than $1.3 billion in bond financing for projects that will invest more than $1.5 billion in central Ohio. Any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have in Economic Development. I'd like to move on to Administration. Is that all right, President Klein? Thank you. As I read this ordinance, I would like to invite Chip Moore, please, to the podium. Chip is president of AFSMI Local 1632. Tonight in Administration, we have ordinance 1397-2017 to accept the proposed collective bargaining agreement between the city of Columbus and AFSMI, Ohio Council 8, Local 1632, April 1st, 2017 through March 31st, 2020, to provide wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment for employees in the bargaining unit as provided in the attachment heretofore, and to declare an emergency. Before I hand the podium to you, President Moore, I would like to invite Director Brandon to say a few words. Director, thank you for the hard work that your team has done on this contract, on the negotiations, and I know that your department has quite a few collective bargaining agreements in front of it this year, and I know the kind of effort that it takes from you and importantly, from every member of your team. So first, I want to say thank you, and then I'd like to turn the microphone to you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Klein, Chairwoman Brown, and members of Council. We do thank you for the opportunity to speak on ordinance 1397-2017 to accept the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Columbus and AFSMI Local 1632. The parties negotiated in good faith, and the agreement before you is a result of the very hard work of both teams, reaching an agreement on what both sides believes to be a fair deal. We are fortunate to have labor and management that can work together to deliver the best services to the citizens of this great city. AFSMI members voted to ratify the contract, and tonight, we are before you for support from City Council. I would like to thank the members of the city's team and all of the directors for loaning out their employees to assist us in the process. It is very time-consuming and demanding, so we do appreciate that. I would also be remiss if I did not thank the Department of Finance, the Department of Technology, and especially the Auditor's Office, Mr. Dorian, Bob McDaniel, and Tim Carroll specifically, for their guidance and support throughout this process. Again, thank you for your support of the work in the Department of Human Resources, and thank you for your favorable, favorable consideration of this ordinance.
Thank you, Director Brandon. President Moore, thank you for coming today as we consider this ordinance, and really for the months of hard work that members of your union put in to, as Director Brandon put it, negotiate in good faith, and to, to fairly sit at the table with the city and come up with an agreement that both parties could get behind. So President Moore, thank you for your leadership, and I'd love to hear a few words from you.
I don't really have anything to say. Director Brandon stole it all.
[laughing]
Thank you, Councilmember Liz Brown, for this time. Since I'm a man of few words, now, I want it noted that I set it up there, and nobody argued with me, so later on, when I'm in meetings with all these people, no more complaining. You had your shot. Anyways, I wanted to take a moment, encourage the Council to pass this legislation. The AFSMI membership has already voted their approval. While the CBA does not have everything everybody wanted, we believe it is what is necessary. I want to recognize and thank the AFSMI negotiating team for all their hard work. They put in long hours, their personal time, before, during, and after negotiations. I've been on the negotiating team for the last five contracts. I feel this team was the most informed and prepared of any. That is in large part because of Vice President Jason Sneed. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, President Moore. Is, are members of the negotiating team here tonight?
No, I wouldn't let them come out.
You wouldn't let them? You, you...
No, I, I gave them some time off.
All right, all right. That's fair. That's fair. Well, could you please extend our thanks to the negotiating team for the hard work that they put in to prepare something to present to, to Council here tonight?
Thank you again.
Thank you. Any questions for my colleagues before Mr. President Moore sits down?
Don't start one.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Seeing no questions, I would first like to move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. I would like to move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
President Klein, that's all I have in my committees.
Thank you. The next committee is Public Safety, chaired by Councilmember Mitch Brown. Chair Brown, the floor is yours.
President Klein, thank you. Tonight, we have to authorize and direct the Finance and Management Director to associate general budget reservations resulting from the ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreements on behalf of the Division of Fire for the purchase of fire uniforms from Galls LLC to authorize the expenditure of $603,000, $603,040 from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Also this evening, I have ordinance 1442 to authorize the transfer of funds from within the Division of Police General Fund Budget to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations within this ordinance from existing universal term contracts with Galls RT LLC for the purchase of uniforms and accessories for the Division of Police to authorize the expenditure of $1,728,617 from the General Fund and the Division's Volunforcement Seizure Funds and to declare an emergency. Again, if there are no questions, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That's all we have in Public Safety.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. The next committee is Public Service and Transportation, chaired by Councilmember Harden. Chair Harden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, President Klein. This evening in Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have ordinance 1337-2017 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept remaining fees simple unless a real estate necessary to timely complete the Luzell Road Phase A Public Improvement Project, and to authorize the city attorney to spend funds pursuant to an existing auditor certificate. This legislation requires a small amount of land in the vicinity of the right-of-way on Luzell Road from North High Street to Worthington Galena Road. Phase A of the Luzell Public Improvement Project will reconstruct Luzell from High Street to Flint Road, widening Luzell for additional lanes, as well as installing sidewalks on the south side of, of the street and a shared youth path on the north side of Luzell. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Next ordinance I have is 1453-2017, and this is to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Strawser Paving Company in connection with the resurfacing program, to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer funds from the Special Improvement Tax Fund and to the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, to appropriate funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund Improvement Fund, and to authorize expenditure of $8,774,226.82 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, and to authorize expenditure of $1,584,380.5 from the Streets and Highways Improvement Fund, and to declare an emergency. This is the city's second of three resurfacing packages for 2017. This contract allows us to resurface 108 city streets and construct 354 ADA curb ramps throughout the cities. This is, like I said, one of three pieces of, of this package for resurfacing 108 streets throughout the city, and if there are no question or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passes.
Thank you so much. That's all I have in my committee.
Thank you, sir. The next committee is Public Utilities, chaired by Councilmember Stenziano. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Public Utilities, bring forward ordinance 1246-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Complete General Construction Company for the Large Diameter Valve Replacements Project, to authorize a transfer and expenditure up to $4,666,694.40 within the Water General Obligation Bonds Fund for the Division of Water, and to authorize an amendment to the 2017 Capital Improvements Budget. This project involves repairs to valves on critical water remains and will improve the reliability of the water distribution system. There was coordination with stakeholders, including a hospital and a large commercial customers during design, and this coordination will continue throughout the construction. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is ordinance 1311-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a professional engineering agreement with Ribway Engineering Group Incorporated for the Blueprint Stormwater System Assessment, Fifth by Northwest and Hilltop Four Project, to transfer within and expend up to $1,439,833.44 from the Storm Sewer Bonds Fund, and to amend the 2017 Capital Improvements Budget. This project will provide incremental funding to assess, clean, and inspect all storm sewer infrastructure within the Fifth by Northwest and Hilltop Blueprint areas, so that the hydraulic capacity of the existing storm infrastructure is restored, which will reduce the neighborhood stormwater flooding issues and create opportunities for the installation of green infrastructure. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is ordinance 1312-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a professional engineering services agreement with Prime AE Group for the Lockborn Intermodal Subtrunk Extension Project, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $2,477,083.44 from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,477,083.44 from the Loan Fund for the Division of Sewage and Drainage. This project will start from the end of the Lockborn Intermodal Subtrunk and will continue eastward along Air Base Road to its upstream termination point. The work will also include master planning efforts for the area in order to establish a more comprehensive and refined approach to provide sanitary sewer service to the Rick and Barker Southeast Service Area. This project has been approved for below-market-rate low, for below-market-rate loan financing through the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency's Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, which is administered by the Ohio Water Development Authority. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And the final piece of exciting ordinances is ordinance 1329-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a professional engineering agreement with Arcatus U.S., Inc., for the Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant Co-Generation Project, to transfer $859,883 within, and to expend up to $1,025,883 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, and to amend the 2017 Capital Improvements Budget. The Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant creates large amounts of methane-rich digester biogas, which is now burned and flares as a waste product. A recent feasibility study shows that installing a co-generation system can beneficially use this biogas as fuel to create electricity that will supply about half the total electricity the plant uses, with an acceptable payback period and significant overall the plant uses, with an acceptable payback period and significant overall reductions in greenhouse gas emissions. The co-generation system will be relatively large and complex, and these funding purchases will be primarily engineering design services for the product. Future legislation will purchase the detailed design of the project, and future legislation will also deal with the installation for the equipment and facilities. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passes.
That's all I have in my committees tonight.
Thank you, Chair Stenziano. We do have one piece in Rules and Reference I chaired that committee. The piece is being brought forward by Councilmember Page. Chair Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Rules and Reference, we have ordinance 1200-2017 to amend various sections in the Columbus zoning code Title 33 in order to adopt code changes that are in compliance with recent court decisions that limit the ability to regulate signs and graphics based upon content. I'll give Director Messer the opportunity to speak further.
Thank you, President Klein, Councilmember Page, other members of council. In 2015, the United States Supreme Court decided a case called Reed versus Town of Gilbert. It limits the ability of local municipalities to regulate signs based on content. As a result, zoning staff in partnership with the city attorney's office, we reviewed the current graphics code to identify and remove any and all content-related regulations. As a result, numerous changes are being proposed to bring the code into compliance. Probably the most noticeable changes relate to temporary signs. Throughout the code, these signs were all regulated differently based on their content. So for example, signs that were of a political nature versus signs for going out of business or advertising some other sale, those were all regulated differently based on their content. We've had to remove all of those different regulations, and now temporary signs are only regulated based on material and duration. The Development Commission and the Graphics Commission both considered all of these proposals and voted to support the proposed changes. We also held a public hearing, and I'd like to thank the city attorney's office for their support. Also, Councilmember Page and her staff were very helpful in getting this legislation prepared and communicated to interested parties in the industry, so that's very appreciated. And I'd like to also thank my staff for their hard work, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions for the Director? Thank you. We also have Mr. Mick Gordon, who is with us this evening from the Columbus Realtors Association. He is the president, and thank you for coming down. He would like to speak in favor of this legislation.
Thank you, Council President Klein, Councilmember Page, members of council, and Director Messer. I'm Mick Gordon, 2017 President of Columbus Realtors. Columbus Realtors represents over 7,200 real estate licensees in central Ohio, nearly 900 of them being commercial practitioners who this ordinance predominantly affects. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of these changes. Our meetings on this issue began months ago with a broad coalition of business leaders, big and small companies, and all aspects of the real estate community, including the Building Industry Association, the Apartment Association, and others. We are grateful for the working relationship we've had with councilmembers Page and Stenziano, as well as Director Messer and their staffs, Chris Persuti, Paul Friedman, Rolanda Hampton, and Kevin McCain. We certainly understand the need to comply with the 2015 United States Supreme Court decision Reed versus the Town of Gilbert. We also understand the need of finding balance between marketing properties, the ability to do business in Columbus, and maintaining an orderly look along our streets and highways. For these reasons, we advocated for the regulation mandating the licensed sign erector install signs over 10 square feet to ensure safety and quality. While some may believe the internet is the best way to advertise real estate in today's market, the fact remains, small business owners, restaurants, boutique and consignment shops, dentists, doctors, and others still call off our signs due to the location and the availability. Signs remain one of the most important and effective tools at our disposal to reduce the commercial vacancy in Columbus. They are vital to our industry. Our industry is committed to continue working together to improve this ordinance as needed once implemented, and again, we thank each of you for your partnership with this ordinance and look forward to working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Are there any questions or comments? Well, I would like to thank you and the entire Realtors Association just for the work that you put into helping us craft an ordinance that's not only good for your business and your customers and your clients, I'm sorry, but also for the city as a whole. So I appreciate your input and just providing a different perspective, and thank you for coming down.
It was our pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. Again, also I'd like to thank Director Messer and the city attorney's office for their work as well into this ordinance and helping us to avoid future litigation. So if there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Councilmember Page.
I would first like to move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second.
So before us is a motion to amend that's been seconded. Clerk, call the roll on the motion to amend.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Amended.
Thank you, President Klein. I now move for passage as amended.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll, passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passes.
Thank you.
Any other business to come before council? We have a couple non-agenda speakers that we'll take momentarily. Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned, we'll take some non-agenda speakers shortly. Regular meeting number 32 will now come to order. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. All members serve on the committee. Chair Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Before beginning our agenda, I would like to ask anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either before any council variance to stand, and please raise your right hand. Just so you know, we permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes. If you would please swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth by answering "I will."
I will.
Thank you. Our first variance this evening is 1382-2017 to rezone 3720 Olentangie River Road 43202, being approximately 7.28 acres located on the east side of Olentangie River Road across from the intersection with McConnell Drive from C2 Commercial District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Ohio Health Corporation. The proposed use is a parking lot. The city department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission. I would now like to ask for a staff presentation.
Good evening. The site is currently developed with an office building zoned in the C2 Commercial District. The requested CPD Commercial Plan Development District will permit redevelopment of the site with a 901 space employee parking lot for the hospital and administrative office staff and will alleviate parking shortage issues resulting from the construction of new administrative office and structured parking facilities on existing surface parking lots. The site is within the boundaries of the Olentangie West Area Plan, which recommends office uses at this location. The Planning Division recognized the proposed parking lot will serve the various offices and medical facilities that this parking lot will serve. The plan also recommends that parking should be balanced with the goal of reducing the development's impact on the natural environment, that landscaping and screening should be utilized to enhance development, and that appropriate corridor landscaping should be provided. The CPD text commits to a site plan and includes variances to allow angled spaces to be 17.5 feet deep and to reduce the required number of parking lot trees from 91 to 76. To offset the reduction in the number of required parking lot trees, shade trees and shrubs are proposed within the parking setback area, which will supplement landscaping along Olentangie River Road. With the landscaping proposed, the request is consistent with the zoning and development pattern of the area. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for staff? There is a request to amend this variance to an emergency. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative present? Thank you for coming down this evening. If you could speak briefly about their project and also the request to amend to emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Greg Listini, Attorney with Brick and Eckler, we are counsel for the applicant. As Ms. Pine stated, this project is part of the broader project that Ohio Health is doing for their headquarters that's relocating right there, Olentangie River Road. I think, as you know, with a project of this size, there's a lot of moving pieces, and a lot of the pieces have to fall into the right place at the right time. And so the emergency is really connected to that. We have a lot of cars on the site that are parking where the headquarters is going to go, and so we need to start moving those off of that site. There are already leasing spots in other places around the area, and we'd like to consolidate a lot of those onto this and then the parking lot rezone on the next item, and that's the reason for the emergency.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Attorney Listini?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming down. I would first like to move to amend to emergency.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
I now move for passage as amended.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Have variance 1383-2017 to rezone 3619 Olentangie River Road, being approximately 1.7 acres located on the west side of Olentangie River Road, approximately 130 feet south of Latham Court from LI Limited Institutional District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Again, the applicant is Ohio Health Corporation. The proposed use is a parking lot. The city department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission. Are there any additional comments from staff? Thank you. And are there any additional comments from Attorney Listini? Thank you. Again, I would like to move to amend this variance to emergency.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
I now move for passage as amended.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
1438-2017 to rezone 1453 North Fourth Street 43201, being approximately 0.39 acres located at the southwest corner of North Fourth Street and East Fifth Avenue from C4 Commercial District to AR1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Arch City Development. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Italian Village Commission's recommendation is approval. And I'd like to ask for a staff presentation.
The 0.39 acre site consists of three parcels zoned in the C4 Commercial District and is developed with two industrial commercial buildings. The applicant is requesting the AR1 Apartment Residential District and proposes the development of a 14-unit apartment building. The site is within the boundaries of the Italian Village East Redevelopment Plan, which recommends commercial land uses at this location. While the proposed use is not consistent with that recommendation, the plan also recommends that the North Fourth Corridor be developed with a mix of commercial, residential, and office uses. The Planning Division has indicated that this proposal is consistent with the recommendation for a mixed-use corridor along North Fourth Street. A concurrent council variance, ordinance 1439-2017, has been filed to reduce the minimum parking spaces required from 21 spaces to 15, and includes variances to building height, vision clearance, lot coverage, building lines, maximum side yard, and minimum side yard. Staff's recommendation for this proposal is approval. I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Is the applicant present and would like to make any additional comments? Do you have any additional comments? Thank you. I would now like to move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
And we have a companion piece for this property, 1439-2017 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 330914 Height Districts, 32149C Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 332105B2 Vision Clearance, 333315C Basis of Computing Area, 333318D1 Building Lines, 333322 Maximum Side Yard Required, and 333323 Minimum Side Yard permitted of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1453 North Fourth Street 43201 to permit a multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant again is Arch City Development. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Italian Village Commission's recommendation is approval. Are there any additional comments from staff with the applicant? I now move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
1440-2017 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332, 035, R3 Residential District, 3312, 273 Parking Setback Line, and 3312, 49 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 26 West Henderson Road 43214 to permit expanded office areas within a mixed-use building with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District and to repeal ordinance number 0870-91 passed April 22, 1991. The applicant is Charles L. Arida II. The proposed use is an expansion of office use. The city department's recommendation is approval. Clintonville Area Commission's recommendation is approval. And I'd like to ask for a staff presentation.
The site is developed with a mixed-use building containing office and residential uses. Ordinance number 0870-91 passed April 22, 1991 permitted the property to be used for specified professional office uses in this R3 Residential District and capped the office use at 1,600 square feet, a reduction from the 3,700 square feet of office space permitted by the previous council variance. Now, the applicant proposes to expand the area of the building that will permit office uses to 2,965 square feet, 2,965 square feet. Also included in the request will be variances to reduce the required number of parking spaces from nine to six due to the increase in allowable office area and to reduce the parking setback line to conform the existing conditions on the site. The site is within the planning area of the Clintonville Neighborhood Plan, which recommends single-unit residential uses for this location. However, the plan also designates West Henderson Road as a primary corridor and notes that mixed-use buildings should be common on said corridors. The mix of uses requested represents an intensification of office uses relative to the existing variance that allows for office uses, but is generally consistent with the intensity allowed by the prior council variance in 1981. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Is the applicant present and would like to make any additional comments? Thank you. I now move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
And our final variance this evening, 1033-2017 to rezone 750 North High Street 43215, being approximately 0.77 acres located at the southeast corner of North High Street and Warren Street from I Institutional District and C4 Commercial District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Shift Capital Group. The proposed use is a hotel. The city department's recommendation is approval. Italian Village Commission's recommendation is approval. I now like to ask for a staff presentation.
The site is zoned in the I Institutional and C4 Commercial Districts and is developed with an 11-story multi-unit residential development for the elderly. The applicant proposes the CPD Commercial Plan Development District to convert and expand the building into a maximum 190-room commercial hotel with ancillary operations such as office, catering facilities, bars and restaurants, exercise facilities, and 1,500 square feet of retail or restaurant space with 450 square feet of outside dining space. The CPD text includes appropriate use restrictions, access provisions, and a commitment to a site plan. The conversion requires variances for reduced setback lines and a reduction in the required number of parking spaces from 213 to 50 with minimum additional 17 off-site parking spaces. These variances, along with variances for existing site conditions related to building height and lack of parking lot landscaping and screening, are included in this request. The proposal includes an expansion to the front facade of the building for the lobby and retail space, which is consistent with the established building line along North High Street. The proposed uses and site plan are consistent with the zoning and development patterns of this historic urban commercial corridor. The requested parking variance, which is based on maximum parking demand findings for hotels in urban areas, is supported by the Department of Public Service with the lease agreement cash and lieu commitment in the CPD text. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any initial questions or comments from any of my colleagues? Seeing none, the applicant's attorney is present, Attorney Mike Shannon. Thank you. Floor is yours.
President Klein, Chairperson Page, members of council, Mike Shannon on behalf of the applicant for this rezoning request, Shift Capital, as well as Continental Development. of the applicant for this rezoning request, Schiff Capital as well as Continental Development. The ordinance before you has been in the works for over a year, and we have made a concerted effort not only to address staff's initial concerns, but also to address council's concerns as we have learned them over the last several months. I do think it's important to note for the record that this application was filed June 7th of 2016. We had our initial meeting with the Italian Village Commission in June. We met with them again in July, August, and September. And in October, after thoroughly vetting all issues, including the parking, they voted unanimously to support it. Then went through another staff review and was issued conditional approval subject to having happy traffic sign-off by the Division of Traffic Department of Public Service. On December 8th, the Development Commission had a public hearing that was noticed, and the matter prevailed by a four-to-one vote. Since that time, based on discussions we had with council, we've made additional changes to the text, particularly in the area of parking. I've gone through a thorough analysis, a market analysis, with legislative aides and members of council. I'd be willing to do so again here this evening. And we do have our consultant here who could provide more information if I'm not adequate in doing so. At this time, however, I would save the remainder of my time to address any items brought up in opposition and to address any questions you might have at that time.
Thank you, Attorney Shannon. Are there any questions? Seeing none. We do have one speaker speaking against this ordinance. Would Eletheria Matza, I apologize if I meant to pronounce your first name or your last name, please come to the podium, and if you could let us know any organizations that you are representing, and you have three minutes.
Hi, members of city council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak before you today. I am representing Short North Citizens United, and I've had the opportunity to speak to several of you in the past, so it's very nice to see you all again. So for the record, I just want to go ahead and read in some objections that we have to this development into the record. That being said, over the past eight months, like I said, I've had the opportunity to meet with many of you, and Short North Citizens United and many of the business owners and property owners in the area have been vehemently and very vocally opposed to this development, not only because of the sale of the Bollinger Tower and its conversion from institutional housing for the elderly, handicapped, and disabled, on the stance that it will fundamentally affect the very fabric of our community, but also because there are a number of issues in play that will affect the public health, safety, and welfare as a means of this rezoning. So I'm just going to read a few of them so that you're aware of some of the issues. As I've mentioned before, the reduction of available parking from 35 spots to 25 spots is not enough to sustain the employees of this building. In addition, all of the parking that is planned to be outsourced as a part of the doubling of the number of hotel spaces from 100 to 200 takes as an assumption that no other members of the patrons of these hotels are going to seek parking in the surrounding areas. We expect that, in fact, they will, and that this will lead to an increase in the parking burden of an already very overburdened area. Additionally, the elimination of setbacks that are proposed as part of this development will lead to a reduction in the necessary separations to surrounding buildings that are required for fire safety. And we've also, on multiple occasions, reached out to members of Schiff Capital Group and their council in order to request a limitation tax to address issues of emissions, lighting, and noise that would affect surrounding tenants that we felt could be reasonably addressed, and we have been denied a return. So we feel that this is an expression of bad faith that we have attempted to resolve and that we feel is something that will affect surrounding members of the area in a way that will affect, again, their public health, safety, and welfare. And then I'd also like to read into the record the insufficient notice that was given as per the statute for this particular meeting. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Attorney Shannon, you have three minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you very much. For the record, I did meet with Eletheria on August 18th of last year, or August 17th. At that time, she specifically said she did not have issues with the parking. Rather, she had three issues. Number one, there's a bus stop in front of our building. She asked us not to move it to the south, which would put it in front of the building that she apparently occupies. Number two, we proposed a loading dock on Pearl Alley, the alley to the east of our site. She said that would conflict with garages for some of the condominiums in the area, and we subsequently agreed to move that loading space on our site in our parking lot. Number three, the Italian Village Commission asked us to do two, what I call, pop-out buildings, and she wanted to make sure that the activity in those pop-out buildings would not affect the quality of life of the businesses and/or residents in the property where she apparently occupies immediately south of our site. I would like to point out, I don't know where she got the fact that we were going from 35 spaces to 25. Maybe she misspoke, but I don't necessarily need to rehash everything, but in pertinent part, the traffic analysis that we did through our consultant indicated that the drive-in rate for this hotel and hotel similarly situated in the Columbus market would be approximately 33%. It also found that the occupancy rate would be approximately 72% for the Columbus market, and they based this on Columbus, Cincinnati, Indianapolis, and Cleveland markets, as well as some others. When we presented this to traffic, it would have come out to about 46, 47 spaces. The traffic engineer, Mr. Blechschmidt, said that he wasn't comfortable doing it at the 72% occupancy rate, and he preferred, out of an abundance of caution, to do it at the 100% occupancy rate, fully occupied, which we agreed to do. And when you look at the number of spaces we are providing, 48 onsite exclusive of two handicap spaces and 17 offsite, that meets the demand that the market indicates is necessary. And again, these developers, Mr. Continental in particular, are not new at developing hotels. I have personal knowledge of 12 separate hotel projects that they are doing right now, and obviously, it would not serve the hotel well to be underparked. I mean, it's a matter of being economically viable and economically profitable, and at the same time, delivering the basic services that our occupants will need. And I've been assured by not only our consultants, but I think somewhat more importantly by our client, that based on their experience, this site is well parked. Worst-case scenario, if it turns out that they need a few more parking spaces, they will simply lease more parking spaces. But based on our experience, we do not think that will be the case. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Mr. Shannon. There any? Councilmember Mitchell Brown?
Mr. Shannon, there was a reference to fire safety. I didn't quite, I couldn't hear completely, but the young lady was here, we were referring to a concern about fire safety.
I think it was a generic comment about the public safety, health, and welfare, which is what your zoning powers come from. I didn't think she gave a specific account. I don't want to speak for her, but I did not hear a specific complaint about safety that I could respond to.
Could anyone even, Ms. Shannon from the city, could you draw any reference to that question at all?
Councilmember Brown, what I can tell you is that this project has been through a preliminary site compliance review by our department, or conducted by our department, and a member of the fire department does attend those meetings, and if any concerns would have been addressed about the potential safety hazards with the expanding of this building, they would have been addressed at that time. So we have received no notification that there was any concerns with their proposed addition.
Ms. Pine, as you know, I'm very aware of that, and that's why I wanted to make sure there wasn't an issue with regards to the assessment that is done by our fire division on any type of project of this nature. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Attorney.
Shannon.
Shannon. I'm looking at Shannon. I know that you mentioned the issue about employee parking, and so I think that, one, could you just kind of answer that? I think that, just basically, employees working in there, how will they be able to get to and from work? That's the question I'll ask.
The employees that work there will not be parking there, as is the case with virtually every business establishment in the Short North, and obviously, that's factored in at the time of fire.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Potem Tyson. Councilmember Stenziano.
Actually, a question for Shannon. There was reference made to the notice. Are you aware of any irregularities that occurred with giving the public notice?
Councilmember Stenziano, I believe the speaker's concern was about the council notification, so unfortunately, my office is not involved with that.
Thank you, Attorney Shannon. If we could actually have the speaker come up and you could clarify your concerns with the notice that was issued.
So if there was a change to the statute made that I'm not aware of, please, by all means, correct me. I certainly don't want to assume any irregularities that haven't occurred, but to my understanding, notice is supposed to be sent out to all surrounding property owners by certified mail within 30 days prior of the hearing occurring, so that if someone is out of town or otherwise needs additional notice, that that's there. Now, if that's changed, certainly, then that's not an issue, but the only notices that were sent out were sent out, I believe, 10 days beforehand and by regular postal mail.
Thank you. And we do have clarification. It is 10 days by regular mail, and I believe for those within 125 feet of the proposed project. Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments? Councilmember Shannon Harden.
Thank you, Chair Page. Certainly want to applaud your leadership on this rezoning application. For all of my colleagues, I think this has been a long process with a lot of conversation with the applicants and with folks in the community in good faith. Also, thank Shannon Pine and her team, and as well as the folks over at Public Service and Transportation who have, we sat around the table and had conversations about this rezoning for a while. One point I would like to make is, earlier on, I had some concerns about the folks who are moving out of Bollinger Tower and that process, and I would like to applaud or appreciate all the partners for working, I think, in good faith to get that process done in a very respectable manner. And at the end of that process, even hearing from the residents, I think that they were appreciative of the process. I'm looking at this piece of legislation as the chair of the Public Service and Transportation Committee, who is about up to here, neck-deep, or even more than neck-deep, in conversations and planning and working on a Short North parking plan. I have concerns about this legislation and how it's compatible with those conversations, with business owners, with residents, and how it fits in with the larger layout of that Short North parking plan. And so for that reason, I'm going to ask for a voice vote this evening on this legislation.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown?
Thank you, Chair Page, and I'd like to echo Councilmember Harden's point specifically about the time that the partners took to make sure the residents of Bollinger, while they were forced to move, were really accommodated and allowed the time. Attorney Shannon referenced the year since original introduction of this, so I want to echo Councilmember Harden's acknowledgement of that. And then I want to also echo your acknowledgement of the Short North parking study, and I guess kind of ask about, and Attorney Shannon, I guess I am going to direct this question to you, to ask about that number that you've provided for number of spots, that your valet company has provided you with the number of spots they presume will be needed by the valet services. Are, in the course of doing the Short North parking study, the Public Service Department dramatically reduced the parking requirement for hotels, I believe cut it in half.
That's right.
Recognizing the urban nature of the district. And yet, you're still saying that you need to come in below that, and I guess that's really what's concerning me here, is if we're setting a precedent for ever lower parking spot acceptability. And I don't know that that's exactly phrased as a question. I apologize, Mr. Shannon, but that's my quandary.
President Klein, Chairperson Page, Councilperson Brown. First of all, I'd like to clear the misconception that somehow that we were getting the best of both worlds and somehow using the Short North guidelines to get where we needed to be here. As you could tell by the chronology of events that I gave you, we actually had this study done and provided it to, in addition to Mr. Blechschmidt, Amanda Ford, and the people that were putting together the Short North study, and we think the information that we got from all the different markets was helpful in them lowering the parking by 50%. And obviously, if we had the benefit of the Short North guidelines, we'd be looking at a variance from 90 spaces to 67 spaces, which is not such a quantum leap as what we have in the current ordinance today. And finally, it's important to note that we are bound by this ordinance, that if we ever get away from the valet parking and the leased spaces, that we have to pay for the difference of what the code required at the time that we made our application and what we are actually providing, and that would be upwards of 1.5 million. But to zero in on your exact question, the analysis that was done, as I mentioned, was done by Town Parking, who is in over 300 cities throughout the United States, and they were able to pull together data from Columbus, Cincinnati, Cleveland, and Indianapolis of comparable markets, I think you would agree, and they have the exact numbers for the hotels in those jurisdictions that indicated the drive-in rate was a little bit less than 34% with an occupancy rate of 72% in Columbus, or the varying percents in the other cities, and even at 100%, that drive-in rate held true. So what we did, out of an abundance of caution, and quite frankly, because the Division of Traffic asked us to, in addition to providing that number, we provided the 17 additional spaces offsite, and in our legislation, if we do not provide proof of that lease for those additional 17 spaces on an annual basis, we jeopardize our zoning clearance, and in fact, they could revoke our zoning if that's not done. So I think the safeguards are in place. I hear what you're saying about the new Short North guideline being .5, and we're closer to .34, but the fact of the matter is, that's what the market is driven to, and the Continentals of the world and Mr. Schiff have been down this road enough with hotels that they had this analysis done before they made their business decision to go forward with the project.
And I very much understand that, and also respect the projects that both Schiff and Continental have done in the past, and their expertise in the marketplace. I guess where I see it is the marketplace hasn't taken care of the Short North parking on its own, so to me, the marketplace on its own doesn't quite suffice as grounds here, and that's why the new rules were promulgated from Public Service.
I hear what you're saying, but I respectfully disagree.
I understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Thank you, and thank you, Councilmembers Harden and Councilmember Brown. On the request of Councilmember Harden, I would like to move for a passage by voice vote.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Harden? Page? Stenziano? Tyson?
Yes.
President Klein?
Thank you very much.
President Klein, that's all we have in zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chair Page. Any other business to come before zoning? Seeing none. Can I get a motion?
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Clerk Calderon?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned.